I don't like this. I'd like to have a...
Yeah, Pupia?
I'd like to have Pupia to follow. If you have one.
Yeah.
Alright, because this shuts down and...
I don't understand what you're saying.
This one was from last year, but...
Oh, that's alright, yeah, yeah.
Or it's stolen in the garbage.
Okay. The agenda. Anybody have anything to add? I would just, just for information, I just want to bring these up. And they can go under... Uh, for information?
A.D.
A.
A.D.
A.B.C. And it's, it's a housing survey. Needs, needs assessment. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, if you'd allow, uh, an, an information piece on something I'll be bringing at a future meeting, just to bring you up to speed on a potential, uh, small project that will have to be done in the West Publico wastewater system.
Okay. And that would be D.
D, A.D.
A.D. If not, uh, motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Um...
Contradicted, carried. Any conflict of interest? Hearing none. Presentation, we have none. It says business arising for minutes, but we, we did have minutes. Council priority progress. And that was on your... So, we're moving along on some of them. Anybody want to, to take that and just, or we just look at it and keep going? If there's no questions?
I have...
Yes?
So, the, uh, this probably goes to a municipal administrative building where we're at fifty percent. That's not fifty percent, because there was somebody I met today and now, and, and he asked me, is that fifty percent of the building? I said, no, it's fifty percent of what we've, what we've got underneath where the airways, or what we've done. Yes, okay. So, he asks, are we there, you know?
Yeah.
I said, I had looked there, and looked at the agenda and asked him.
Yeah, the, just an answer to that, um, a little bit more specific, is that the tendering will likely go out in the early spring, late winter of 2018. So, we're, we've got the public input session on this Thursday. This will be the first time that we actually see a draft exterior and interior design. So, um, so that's, so we've already chosen location, we've already engaged professionals, so we're into number three, engage the public for input. Um, so number four will be, will be into 2018. And we might begin the construction on the new administration building before the end of March. It'll be really tight, but it will be, certainly, it will be, um, very soon after that.
Okay. And I didn't mention, but we had two regrets from two councillors. Uh, councillor Lysia LeBlanc and councillor Roderick Murphy sent their regrets. I should have done that first, but... Okay, financial report. I guess that's Marsha.
So, attached you will find financial report September thirtieth, 2017, halfway through fiscal year, showing a surplus of one hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. We look at the revenues, which is showing a surplus of just over thirty thousand dollars. You will note that twenty thousand, seven thirty-one of that is the decrease, which is the bulk of the surplus in the revenues. You go to, if we look over some of the variables in the expenditures, if you look on page two of the financial report, um, general government services showing a surplus of thirty-seven thousand, two twenty-seven, which is a combination of items mainly being a savings in administration, where we're always trying to keep costs as low as possible. I.T. is showing a small surplus, surplus, which is mainly in capital equipment, which is the equipment has yet to be purchased. Um, benefits... Oh, sorry. Um, and benefits, which is due mainly to the position vacancies and employees that have yet to join the plan. Um, under transportation services, most of the surplus is under air operational support, which the bulk of it is, um, the municipal, the municipality have put in their, a third of the share to hire and economic development expertise, which will likely not happen, but we have however, get, getting engineering services to help with the pricing. Uh, environmental development services is showing a surplus in the West Publico sewer, which is mainly savings in general repairs and capital infrastructure. The public works department has advised me that they are in the process of receiving quotes for these items. And lastly, at the bottom of the page, um, under recreation and cultural services, recreation is showing a surplus of just over nineteen thousand dollars, which is a combination of savings in senior and rec, senior and program expenses. Um, many time funding is approving after the budget has been set. There is also savings and repairs and capital projects, which that money is mostly set for the East Publico walking and bike track, is that what it's called? Okay. Um, which is to be completed hopefully in the near future. The courthouse is showing a surplus as well, which is mainly under capital equipment. The equipment and furniture to be used for exhibits at the museum was budgeted, but had not been purchased prior to last summer. They are hoping to purchase these items prior to the year end and preparation for next summer. And that is basically the bulk of it, and I don't have any more questions.
Anybody have any questions? Councillor Shrek?
A few questions, um... Maybe this has been answered before, but when I asked, uh, asking, I just probably forgot. The, the, she, the Wellington turbine is at forty-five thousand. The budget, I'm sorry, is at forty-five thousand, we're at twenty-two, five hundred. Is that still, uh, would that's, if we've been paid, or if we haven't been paid yet, let's say that although it's made that money, but we hadn't had the check?
Yes.
Does that, is that like a receivable? Is that how that's set up? Like, like, if it's saying that it's there, and we didn't get the money, should it be there? And I'm sure it should be, but I guess the question I'm asking, I know Alan, it's better to answer this one or yourself. I don't know if it's a fair question, Alan, for me to ask, or, uh, at least it's a question I had. Do you understand what I'm trying to ask?
Yeah, yeah, I do. Did you want to...
It's basically the money, money's budgeted for the whole year.
So you...
But we, the middle column's prorated.
Right.
So it's prorated based on half the year. So whether the money has been received or not, it's still going that halfway through, that's what the, the money would be received.
Perfect. That's what I want to know.
Is that...
Great, oh, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, that's why I had the question to it. Uh, Mr. Chair, could I have another question?
Mm-hmm.
Not taking everybody here's. The, it says the fines are forty-three, eleven over budget, the fines?
Yep.
Now, where did I find that?
This is an item that we don't really have any idea throughout the whole year, how, how much we're going to be receiving, because it all depends on...
So is that because people are not paying their bills? They have a fine? Oh, no, this, this is nothing to do with taxation.
It's nothing to do with taxation.
Right. This is, this is come, this comes in as fine, somebody that...
Through the RCP.
Oh, I get you. Okay, I wonder where it came from? It was unsightly, unsightly, or, no?
We, we inquired about this, Alan, um, and I don't really gather what they had said, because we tried to make rhyme or reason out of it and...
It's, if, if the infraction occurs in the municipality of Argyle, not that it incur, like, so the infraction, you could, you could be caught for speeding, let's say, but if you were in Yarmouth versus if you were in Argyle, there's a portion of that fee that gets returned to the municipality because they're paying for policing services. So it's, it's not the whole thing, clearly, and, uh, and so it's never that much for us. And it's like Marsha's, our director of finance, Marsha, said, we don't ever know, you know, yeah, and, and it depends on the enforcement and...
Yeah.
Whether people are caught and, and I can't, I can't recall, it's not all of the fines. I can't recall the list of fines that qualify for this, but it isn't all of them, so...
It's a huge amount.
No, no.
Just, I was just wondering about...
Yep.
Another question I've got is, I see that the Middle East Publico water, the capital repairs is eighty-four, eighty-four fifty, fifty-three over prorated budget. So that is just because there was breakdowns and stuff that happens?
That is in the capital and repairs.
Yeah. So I know we are, we're going to spend some money in there, because we put a hundred thousand into the budget.
Yeah, so that money, basically, whatever we pay out, we have money set aside from the East Publico water utility, so that gets, you know, one, the other, yeah. So it's not a cost to municipality.
Another final question I could go with is a, I might know the answer to this, but AMA website, year three of three, forty-two hundred dollars. So, that's not AMA that we're paying for their website? Is that something that we're partnered with for our website?
Yes.
Very good. And that's what I was wondering, when I saw it was forty-two hundred dollars, I said, are we doing something for the AMA that we're in our budget? But no, it's for our website, and we're going through them too.
Yes.
As far as you know, yeah. That's the questions I had, thank you.
Anybody else? No more questions, then we need a motion to...
So moved.
Second. Seconded, and that's not to approve, but to accept, right? To accept the financial report. Has all in favor?
Aye.
Contradicted, carried. Okay. Item number seven. Seven A, dangerous and unsightly premises policy update. Now, this is under, for this, this decision and discussion, it's not, we don't need a decision this time on this, but it's for a decision or, or for, uh, for information more than anything, or discussion.
Seeing as it's, represents, um, a change in our policy, this could be considered the one week notice for that change.
Okay.
So our public works director, um, has offered to come in and answer any type of questions. I can start by saying that, uh, what we wanted to create, we couldn't find it, and it, what was unusual is that we asked the question out to other municipalities and said, well, do you have a, an assessment form that you use with your unsightly premises? And there were actually very few of them. And so we created our own, which is to say that there are certain things around cleanliness or unsightly that would be more offensive than others. The MGA does address this in, in the act, as well as our policy, it does address examples of, of unsightly. So if, if you see, that this is actually a rating system that has been attached for your consideration, so, uh, if, and so there's a rating chart on the back, so obviously, the higher the rating, uh, the better. So, you know, one, you know, if you're rating somebody's cleanliness on a property as one, that's poor, and four is good. So you, uh, the purpose is to, is to score these properties in a way that, that, you know, we can approach in a more, um, subject, like, it, it's taking a subjective view of a property and putting it on paper in a way that could be a bit more objective. Um, our concern, of course, is when we go in and we go into properties, you know, somebody's thought of unsightly is very different than others, right? So there's cer, and so, so there are four things that are, the things that are being measured are property cleanliness, the main building itself, any garage or shed, what does it look like? Vehicles, machines, parts, hazard level, is there a hazard to the public, hazard to, for fire or life or whatever? And stockpile of materials, so, and which is often, quite often the case, is people stockpile metals until the price is good, and in the meantime, it's, it's a very unsightly thing to do unless you have it behind some fencing. Um, so, and so the rating is on the back, and it's, and then it also gives a very clear distinction on how you would rank them. So the purpose is, is that it's not just one person going in and in his or her opinion, this is what it is, right? This is a measure or of, this is what we're looking for, and if it's not there or there, you get a rating one way or another. So, um, it's, it's, I mean, I think it's well constructed, it's, it was well thought out by our public works, um, official, and, um, very detailed in terms of approach, which, um, which is very advantageous. Our hope would be, talking about it now, our hope would be that, um, that we could take this, this information and bring this information to a group, um, that it's not just one person, that there could be other people involved, and we have a broader plan about how we actually deal with some dangerous and unsightly premises, because there's often underlying problems that aren't about cleanliness or other things, that are potentially mental health issues, or perhaps there is potential, there's a myriad of, of reasons why people would, you know, lose track or lose control of the cleanses of their home. Uh, some of it's financial, et cetera. So there's a lot of, like, human factors that, that the bylaw doesn't address, that the MGA doesn't, sorry, not the bylaw, the MGA, that the MGA doesn't address. The MGA takes an enforcement approach to, to enforce, to bylaw, to this particular, um, problem, which absolutely you need, but there is another element here, and we're trying to, we're trying to, to document the enforcement side as, as well as we can, so that we can support our conclusion that it's dangerous or unsightly. Um, but we're also, at the same time, uh, trying to get multiple groups engaged with some of these homes that we may, that may require additional help, be it financial or, or health-related, uh, reasons. So, um, I trust you had the chance to look at the form and, and the detail that was, uh, prepared by our property works director. If you had any direct questions for Hans, he's here for you, and could answer any questions around why it was done this way, um, and that's pretty much it.
Anybody have questions?
I looked it over yesterday, and it looks very fair, and like you say, you could give it the, the form to three or four people, get them to all rate it, and chances are they'd all come back very close to the same ratings, like, it's well detailed and well thought out, I thought.
Yep.
It's somewhat based on the experience that we get in the field, what we have seen so far, or the cases we're in the last few years, so some of these items are, that I listed are the most common problems, so I mean, this should be a living document, it should be kept updated seasonally, or case by case, and should be updated, just so we stay on top of things, or include things that are not included currently, so, so that's probably a lot of situations that we haven't thought about yet, so...
Just a comment, maybe, I guess I was, when I was looking, like, Glenda looked at it last night, and, uh, if it's a senior citizen and the grass is tall around their house because he just, you know, somebody that's sick and that, and I said, I wonder what, but now I think, I'll answer that. There's all the other underlying things, and you would dig into that before. You say first thing, we gotta shut her down, or you gotta pay for this. You know, if a senior's got no money, they're just really getting behind living in the house, and sick, and, yeah, there's always other reasons that sometimes, you know, but, but there shouldn't be a bunch of garbage bags outside the house either, though, at the same time. It was just the grass.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's supposed, depends by, by individual situation.
Yeah.
Not that we're trying to judge everyone by...
It would have to be, yeah, it would have to be a case by case.
Yeah, it would have to be case by case, absolutely.
This approach is a little more objective, less subjective, because now it's totally up to the bylaw enforcement officer to say, this is unsightly or not unsightly, or dangerous or not unsight, uh, undangereous. So there's a big gap of, there's a big gray area that one person should cover.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I'm gonna be quiet.
It does not replace the need to enforce certain scenarios.
Right.
It's not a replacement or a, a reduction.
I'm gonna be quiet.
Yeah.
We'd be off topic.
Okay.
And are, are we, oh, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, go ahead.
Are we, do we wait for complaints, or are we going to be patrolling to see if things, if the properties are, are, are not unsightly or whatever?
This is supposed to be addition to the current, uh, process, so it's kind of just, once we receive the complaints, the written complaint by a resident, then we would use this information, this form...
Yes.
To confirm or not confirm the, the complaints.
Yes.
So based on that rating, after that, we follow the steps outlined in the MGA, or we, based on the individual situation, contact other authorities and ask for help or support, or we deal, or we enforce it, if we realize there's no other issue, it's really just a, uh, an unsightly situation, we either enforce it, or we offer help.
Right.
But this is just a step to evaluate and...
And to determine whether or not, like, like it was mentioned, as, what, what I might see unsightly may not be unsightly, you know, as, as far as these are concerned. At least we've got something to follow, to follow and, and to look for. You had a question, uh?
The only thing I was gonna say, this here now could help, it would be another tool to possibly speed up a process of an unsightly, uh, situation, an unsightly premise, to help get it fixed.
It's a help for us, this bylaw enforcement, uh, on the bylaw enforcement side, because we can say, this is objective, this is what you have on the current day, and it's unsightly, you have to deal with, and it's three, two or three other people have the same opinion, and came to the same conclusion based on this rating, based on this, uh, system, so there, there's no way to argue, or say, oh, this is, this is not unsightly, or in my opinion, it's not, so there's not, no room to argue, but the same, it's for the resident, it's also...
The bank, that bird was one of them.
The resident's also a, a tool to protect themselves from unreasonable complaints.
Okay, yeah. So this should put more teeth into, uh, into the bylaws than as far as whether it's unsightly or not?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
So that hopefully will help you, Mr. Warden, with some of the issues.
Okay. So we'll continue if there's no other questions. Station Road Access to Trails. There's a letter here.
I can speak on it.
You can, you can speak on that one.
If anybody's not familiar with the Boyd's Road, it's about a kilometer up the Argyle Head Road. And the Victoria Road is about a half a kilometer below the, the old Argyle, in Lower Argyle. There's no access to the trail between those two roads, which is what? I'm just guessing, seven or eight kilometers? And there's the old, what they call the old station road, which I don't know how to describe, but where it is, uh, but does anybody know where that is?
I know where it is. Isn't there, wasn't there a store, something right on the corner?
Yeah, there's a store.
Harrow Heinz's store?
Yes, Harrow Heinz's store.
Where the Big Corner is?
Greg, no.
No?
No, Greg Heinz lives close to there. Uh, do you know where the boat shop is in central Argyle?
Very, very close to that.
It's very close to there, within half, half a kilometer. So there's no access to get to the trail, and this Mr. Doakes, which I didn't realize, is basically taking care of the trail from the Boyd's Road to the Victoria Road, he can access it, because he's got tractors and everything he needs to do, the, the bushcutting and the mowing and filling in holes, but the culverts on the station road are blocked, so the road floods and you can't walk around, you can't get through it. Uh, so I don't know how we should approach this, because the letters usually don't do much good, so, uh, we're gonna have to send a letter, but how do we follow up on it? Because this is a problem that needs to be fixed, not a wish, but I think it's something that has to be done. And it's just a matter of a few culverts, probably a couple.
Because the department owns that road. It is a, it is a department road, but it probably is a case action.
Yeah, well, it was like years ago, it was a well-kept road when the trains were going through, right? Because that's where the mail come and...
It's where the station was.
It's the state, it's where, I guess that's where it's the station road.
Mm-hmm.
Everywhere had station roads back then.
Yes, yeah.
So, I guess the first step is to send this letter along with the, a letter from us asking them to act on it. I don't know if he sent this letter to the department.
It's not shown.
It doesn't show, no?
As if he copied anybody.
So... And it may be just a situation they're not aware of what's going on, based on what they told us when they met with us, they don't always know all the little problems going on.
Well, we can have a motion to at least...
I will make that motion to send Mr. Doakes' letter and a letter from the municipality to Nova Scotia Transportation and Infrastructure, it was much easier than when it was DOT.
Second.
Would that, would that be sent to, uh, to Yarmouth, or would that go to Halifax, or...
I would say Yarmouth.
It would be Yarmouth.
I think, I think we...
That's a local issue.
Probably.
And it's maybe attention to Bill Thurston, because he's the one that does, does our end of the district, the region. Am we clear?
Clear.
Just to add on, uh, Miro, Miro's Hill, just I guess it's gonna address maybe a little bit of this, Miro's Hill, the Schmede Pre, if you go on the Gasol Road, and if you go almost to the end of the Gasol Road, you can turn right, and you'll come, you'll go across the Pre, I was gonna say Preo.
Marsh.
Marsh. You go over Marsh, and the road has really collapsed quite a bit, you can hardly pass, so they put barriers on both sides of that. Marsh, and I went to see them, because the residents want that road fixed, because it is a recorded road. And you know what? They told, they told me plain enough that they will not touch it, because there's another way to pass where the bar, the Lebar, the haystacks are, and since there's another way to pass to get there, they will not touch it, and it's a recorded road.
Yeah.
It's all recorded, so I'm hoping that maybe you guys have better luck.
Yeah, well, this one goes just to the, where the old rail...
To the, to the track. So...
We will try.
Any, any discussions? If not, all in favor? We'll signify. Contradicted, carried. So that'll be, get done, and to follow up, I don't know, I think it's just a matter of maybe asking for response, I'm, I'm not sure whether or not...
Well, Chris is very good at writing letters, so it'll be interesting to see. Put the pressure on him, Chris.
Keep on him, I'm sure I do.
Why do you have to, yeah? The next item is Town of Shelburne Letter of Support for a dialysis unit at the Roseway Hospital. So they're just asking for a letter from us, that we support it, I guess.
Do we need a motion to...
We probably need a motion to...
I'll make a motion that we send a letter of support. Second.
She'll second that.
Okay. Any comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Contradicted, carried. Topic discussion for our joint council meeting.
Do we have room to fit them all in here? Do we have room to fit them all?
Me and Alan talked about that.
No. They'll fit like we all do.
Coming anyway.
Be downright, I'm proud of that, that you're coming here, but...
So are you asking if there's anything else, or did you want to discuss something ahead of time?
Uh, both. I mean, at this point, it's a little late to add something to their agenda, but it was more, yeah, I mean, it's more about if there are topics you want to talk about in the future, we can do that, but we could, that's like at the end of the meeting, where we say we'd like to talk about this at the next meeting.
Yes.
And the purpose of putting it on this agenda is so that you can have a conversation as a group around these issues, and whether or not you have anything, any concerns or any questions of clarification or whatever, before you go in to the regional meeting.
So that we know, basically, if we discuss it here, at least we'll look at there, knowing what our feelings are...
Yeah.
On the issue as well.
It's difficult to speak for a group when you're only speaking for yourself, and you haven't had a conversation, yeah.
Yes. So, if, yeah, any, any of the topics, uh...
Well, I've been, and I'm gonna bring up whether it's on the agenda or not, but I think it is five D is where my talk was gonna be on, and I was gonna mention, I'm glad you put this on our agenda, because certainly... That was gonna mention, I'm glad you put this on our agenda, because certainly, uh, I don't want people to be shocked, but, uh, uh, certainly, the letter we had, the, the letter we had on our emails, on our iPads, concern from one council, from another, another district, which I can't name, wouldn't be fair. I'm gonna bring that, that topic up about regional priorities. Because my feeling is, is that, I guess if regional priorities or joint council priorities, I'd like to know, you know, it's being addressed on five D, what they are. Because when it came to the Mariner Expansion, that's one question, where did we fit with that? I thought it was a, a, I thought it was a regional priority, maybe, I guess maybe I was wrong, but that's what I thought. But then they've got this arts and culture, which is the town has the arts and culture, and, and good for them, I have certainly. But then having a request for us as councils to, to go to their arts and cultures meeting, when the Yark is trying to build a building, I, I felt like, I don't wanna take any sides on this, and I thought it was pretty petty, uh, from the town of Yarmouth, that to go and ask me, or any of our council, but I, I gotta speak for myself, same as that council did from the other district, asking us to, asking me to go to this meeting, well, just the, the, the illusion that he used, or she used, whatever the case may be, illusion that you're there means that you would be supporting, so. I, I thought, I, I, I was insulted a bit on that, on that request from the town, and I was certainly gonna bring it up at, at that meeting tomorrow, that I don't feel it was right for them to, to ask me to go in the middle of a problem they've got. And listen, once it's sorted, I have no problem to seek for support or whatever, or the question comes up to council. But at this point, to have a, a, an ask, and what, with what's out there about this between the Yark and the Arts and Culture Center, I don't wanna be in the middle. And I, I felt that we were, that I was being drawn myself by throwing my face there. So that was one item I was gonna bring up. And item two was, where do we fit it with, with regional priorities compared to joint council priorities? What's, what's the difference? And if the Mariner Expansion was on our table, it was on number three, which I'd like to thank, but it was Chris, I landed, send that out where we got that, from that meeting, I've been searching for that. When that was sent and it showed that Mariner Expansion was number three on the list, I, I, I guess I thought it was a regional priority, but I, so what's the difference? If we are the regional priority, first thing they're doing, uh, we're doing a track and field, which we feel is better, where do we fit in the whole bag of things there? And I think it's a discussion that's gonna be had, in fact, I've talked to people from other, other units, and they're certainly interested on this topic and where, where we fall, and that's one item, certainly wanna straighten up.
So.
So that's one thing that's a real, it doesn't need any discussion, but just my point, and so you won't be surprised. And I will certainly say that I felt I was insulted by that letter, certainly I wanna state that, thought it was unfair.
I, can I speak? I guess it's, it's, it's confusing, and it's hard to, uh, to distinguish between joint and regional, because we have no body set up with employees. It's like whoever we can con into lead one project or, or another from a certain municipality, and there's no structure in place. So if the town feels like they want an art center, and it's a priority for their tax dollars, it may take them out of a regional or joint decision.
Yeah.
Because they wanna move on with something else. I mean, so until there's something in place that you can, it's got some teeth, I don't know how you do it any different.
And it could, it could take away from us if they're going after, sorry to bother you, just to add on, if they're going after a project, the first thing we go for track and field, all of a sudden they've jumped on the bad line and all this. And let's face it, our provincial and fed, provincial and feds will only support so much, I would think, maybe, uh, probably knows how it works, I guess, it's, sorry, Richard, you know, that takes your time there.
Well, when it comes like down to the bottom line, councils are probably gonna lean towards brick and mortar in their municipality.
Exactly.
At the expense of dropping something somewhere else.
That's right.
I mean, it's just human nature until there's something in place to.
Absolutely.
And, and when we decide as, in a joint council, uh, meeting, that a project that we agree, we all agree on at that meeting, it still has to go to each individual council, each individual council meeting to get approved, though. We can't approve anything at that joint council meeting, can we?
I mean, no, I mean, you can, you can pass motions.
We pass it there.
But it really, it really doesn't mean anything in terms, because there's no accountability. Like all, like you could, you could say you, you wanna build, uh, the Eiffel Tower, and you wanna do that and by motion at the regional council table, but the regional council doesn't have any money.
No.
So ultimately, it's up to the three individual council groups to make a decision around the pri, the priorities of.
That's right.
Of the region.
Yes, and we do that at our own meetings.
Yes.
Even though, even though it's something that we all decided on, each individual council has to, to, to approve at a regular meeting.
That, that's right, and that's exactly what happened when we set the regional capital priorities.
Yes.
We said that airport was one, uh, number two was, I believe, ferry terminal, and number three was Mariner Center. Uh, the track and field was taken off the list, not because it wasn't a priority, but because it wasn't as large as the other ones. And so what they felt was, is this was like a, like a multi, multi, multi-million dollar project, um, as opposed to track and field, which is like a little over 1.1. So what they felt was, well, we can actually tick that one off if we have to, by getting, you know, smaller dollars, but what we were looking at was, was the larger projects. That motion was passed by the three municipal councils. I believe the council of municipality of Yarmouth did not pass the, the motion the same way that the town and, and the municipality of Argyle did. We passed it as, here are our three priorities. The municipality of Yarmouth took a different approach. They said, we don't want three, we want one. This is our priority, airport.
But the town did, though.
The town, the town passed the same or similar motion than we did, but the municipality of Yarmouth said, well, you know, make up your mind, that's basically what they're saying, right? Which is, which is, it's a good, it's a good point, make up your mind, if, if that, is that a priority or isn't it? Priority by its definition is not plural, it's singular. So, so they said they wanna focus on one, and they don't wanna give, they didn't wanna give other layers of government the idea that we would, that they would, that, that we would accept, or that they would accept a smaller project as opposed to dealing with their number one. That's the reason why they made it that way. It wasn't to be contrary to us or to the town, it was, it was to protect the number one.
So what, how, what, what, what does that do to the Mariner Center if they didn't approve that as their priority then, at the town, at the municipality? So all of a sudden, it's no longer a joint, is it? I mean, if.
Although the town did, and they jumped on something else.
Oh, yes, they did.
And they jumped on something else.
Yes.
Well, I, I don't know what the town actually did. I know that at the meeting for the Mariner Center, there was, there was, there was some conversation, discussion that the town was less interested in having conversations about the Mariner Center because they had other priorities.
That's right.
Which, you know, if, quite frankly, if the town and the municipality of Yarmouth aren't interested in expanding the building they own, it's hard for us to.
That's it.
It's hard for us to be, you know, in the middle of all that, and, and, and I think the whole point of passing regional priorities was that we would collectively go after those.
Right.
As opposed to like individual.
Yes, yeah. Cause they didn't attend, the town did not attend the, the Mariner Center, uh, meeting that we had.
No.
Neither did the, of course, Yarmouth, the last one, they weren't there.
No, they weren't there either.
But in central.
Exactly. There was just Argyle municipalities, exactly.
Hopefully we'll get more clarification tomorrow.
Yes, for sure.
Sure, it's a good, I think it's a good discussion.
Yeah, so any of the other topics here? Is there anybody who wants to discuss or bring any of them up?
I have just a question, bike lanes, like, i- is that a discussion we should be having? If it's a municipality or district, they wanna put bike lanes in their own place, is it a discussion we should be having at this table? See what it says on five B, it says bike lanes?
The, the bike lanes.
Well, of course, it depends on the discussion list.
Brought, brought, brought up by, by Modi, but it doesn't mean, I, I, I think it's something that, that, uh, it's been discussed before, that when they pave roads, doesn't matter if it's in Yarmouth municipality or not, that they should start looking at making bike lanes. And maybe that's all that is for, just to bring it up to the, to the group, right?
Yeah.
Based on what they sent as an attachment to that, they're looking for input from the neighboring municipal units on what they do and.
Yes.
Claire would be a good example, because they've done some the last few years.
Oh, yeah.
On Route One. I mean, we didn't even try to attempt to do anything in central Argyle or Argyle, because the cost would have been extremely high for what little population you got going through there.
Well, we, that was brought up through the, um, Act of Living. And wasn't there a survey done by the department that said that, wherever it was that they had looked at, that there wasn't enough traffic to warrant that? I'm sure Natalie had told me something about.
In relation to Argyle?
To Argyle.
It's, it's possible, what they said was, uh, they were strategic about the bike lane, so they said was, you know, the traffic is not too bad until you reach certain areas where it's, it might be a safety issue.
Right.
So what they recommended was to not do a bike lane, but to do a bike lane in the, in the areas where there would be higher risk of, of, of danger.
Okay.
So I, I recall there was like a slight area in Argyle that they had said you should do a bike lane in that area. So it's obviously, I mean, the recommendation came in, the plans for Argyle were already well underway, but, and so, you know, but, uh, the Department of Transportation is supposed to come to us, and we have sent this, this request, uh, supposed to come to us, uh, before they do major paving to align the active, our active transportation plan with their plans.
Right, because it's not part of our plan, though. So it didn't, it didn't show up in our, in our, in our active transportation plan. I, I got a call from someone wanting to know why it wasn't in there, and that's when I contacted Natalie.
Okay.
Right? And she said something about the Department of Transportation had done a survey, or some kind of a study, whatever, and they said that it shouldn't be in there.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, that, I can't recall the study, but I thought there was a section of Argyle they had identified, but not the whole Argyle, I know that.
And maybe, and maybe that's it, too.
Yeah.
Well, the person that called, that, that called me, maybe he was looking at his own area that he saw that it wasn't there.
Sure.
That could have been, okay?
Yeah.
Well, just that one more thing was the Curling Club. I guess that decision, uh, I think when, if there's a decision and they want money for to, to fix their link-up, that still has to come to council for approval. Let's say people say, we, we can't just make a decision that, that you say, it's gonna come to our individual council and decide if we wanna participate in the plan.
Yeah. But, but the Curling Club, the Curling Club, if the Mariner Center Expansion went ahead, the Curling Club would end up in there anyway.
That was part of the original plan.
That's a part of the original plan, there was that, and there was the YMCA, and, yes.
But I think this is an immediate funding, you know.
Oh, that could be, that could be, yeah.
So I don't even know, that's beyond, I don't know.
Well, Richard, this is why I brought it up.
Something like this, usually they go to each individual council and make their pitch.
Yes.
Hit us all at the same time, I guess.
Well, so I guess the question is, which way is better? You know, um, you know, uh, right now, we're getting presentations by primarily community groups in, in Yarmouth, but for instance, nothing would stop the Bilargi Storic, for instance, to make a presentation to this, to this group and say, you know, we've got this major project going on, this is a regional asset of tourism, and, and we'd like some support from the three units. So the question becomes like, how, how would you like to make these decisions in the future? Because I, I can tell, I can assure you that it's pretty annoying to the nonprofit groups to go to three different groups and watch three different cultures and three different decision-making patterns, um, at play. And I think it might be interesting to understand where your partners lie before making a decision, rather than making a decision in isolation. So it really, it's up to, it's really up to you. I mean, and so if, if you don't believe that this is the proper way to deal with this, then, then, you know, we can restore that back to the regular. But from my perspective, it's, it, you know, they're taking advantage of the fact that everybody's in the same room, no question.
Kinda makes sense.
And, and in, in a lot of ways, I think that's, that's an efficient way to deal with that.
Sure it is.
I think it is, too.
I think it is, too.
And if you, like, for instance, just to finish that point, if you, let's say, for instance, you're not interested in supporting the Curling Club, it's not something that, that the municipality of Argyle wants to do, you can tell that to your partners. You can tell them right there and say, look, we're not gonna do this, and this is why.
Yes.
And at least they hear it, you know, and then, so there's no assumption around, like the communication isn't broken down, it's, it's transparent. You're, you know, you're shedding the light on, you know, why you make the decisions, because ultimately, you know, that money is taxpayers' money, and it's municipality of Argyle's taxpayers' money, so, you know, that's.
And it definitely speeds up the process, because they've, they've gotta go to three councils.
That's right.
And the three messages, and then before we all get together, and, you know, uh, so, so this way is, you know, pretty quick and easy, I would say.
You got it.
Number four A.
Four A.
What's that presentation gonna be? Is it gonna be pitching expansion, or is it just an update on? I don't know.
I don't know either, but I, I expect.
Now, I figured that was dead in the water.
Yeah, I, I expect they're going to wanna know from the different units, why and where they stand and why they, they're doing that, like if they're not gonna support it or whatever. Because from what, from what we heard at that meeting was exactly that, that if, if the town doesn't, if all three don't, don't come on board, then chances are that that's gonna be, it's gonna die.
So basically, we'll be sitting, listening to that one, see where the others are going.
Yeah.
Well, one, one question they had was, or one point they had, somebody paid, paid for the survey here, and all of a sudden we've been dropped, dropped, dropped right there, and they paid for the, it was, it was quite an expensive survey to do the expansion, and then the first thing they said, okay, we decided to go this way, we're not going that way, which is up to per, per unit, but they were, you know, pretty discouraged about it, if we remember in the meeting.
And that point goes back to what Richard said at the beginning, how we don't have anything official, we've just kinda been doing this unofficially, right? But we're making motions, and we're giving money to certain, um, surveys or, you know, efficiency, um, assessments, thinking we're all in, and then suddenly we're not all in, right?
Such a great point, such a great point.
Giving money, thinking we're all going in that direction, but yet, we're not, but there's nothing really binding any of us.
No, exactly.
In kind of direction, I know which direction most of the money goes.
And that's, that, yeah, so do we wanna be in a bind agreement?
Great point.
Do we really want to? Or do we wanna have the freedom to say, well, I guess we're not interested in this one, you know?
Sort of like Barrington and Claire. I keep bringing that up too much.
I think, I, I think, um, on certain projects, and this is my own personal opinion, there's, this is not, on certain projects, boundaries have to be erased, on certain projects, because they're so big, that if you're caught fighting amongst each other, you'll never get the federal or provincial government to support the project. This is the, this is, you know, this issue, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking first about the initial Yark, not, not what's going on now, but initially, where there, you know, there were some negotiations on funding, and then there were, then the town and the Yark took a different position on location. That kills deals.
Oh, yes.
Right? And, and I, and I mean, no disrespect to any of the partners that are involved, I'm not taking a position on that, I'm just, I'm saying that, that that is also true at the regional level. So really and truly, I, I personally believe that having the conversation at the regional level is critical. And at the end of the day, it doesn't mean that you have to support all of these projects that are happening regionally. What it means is that you have a dialogue and a conversation about it, and you say, you know what, this isn't in the best interests of Argyle, or this one is, and sometimes it's in Argyle, and sometimes it's not. But it doesn't mean it doesn't serve our people, like the Mariner Center clearly serves our people, and, and, you know, and I'm not suggesting that that suddenly becomes number one, I'm not, I'm not trying to make a political statement here, I'm just saying that there I'm just saying that there are certain projects that are so big, you can't do them alone. You just can't. And so, um, you know, if, if, if municipalities or towns decide to go at it alone, they, they're often not successful. So, um, and I'm just, it's up to you to decide which ones are actually.
That's right.
Yes.
Are actually, that the boundaries get erased, right? And there are projects that there are ultimately very strong boundaries, like wastewater and other things that we do for our communities, that we will do for our people no matter what.
Yeah.
So, so there's, I, I think it's worth the conversation and it's, and if you're not gonna get involved at a regional level, it, it's, it's the, it's the conversation that you need to have face to face so that they at least understand why.
Right.
They at least understand why, and vice versa is also true. If, let's say the municipality doesn't wanna, doesn't wanna support the track and field, whatever reason, they tell us why.
Let us know.
Let, let us be adults about how we move forward as, as communities and, and we do what we can. And, and the more information we have about the region, the better we can represent our people, in, in my personal opinion.
And I think it's very important to have that, that, the, uh, joint councils get together for, for sure.
I can assure you, it's improved the relationship amongst the councillors, I can see it.
Yes.
I can see it in meetings, you're, you're a bit more, you're starting to build, uh, you know, personal relationships better than happened in the past. We always had good relationships, but, but, you know, when it comes to money, there can be conflict. And there has been.
Yeah. I was predicting.
Uh, no, I was just gonna back on that a hundred percent and, uh, and I think we have to work together, you know, as a region. And that on some projects to make them work, it's as simple as that. But I also feel as though when you have three units coming together and saying, this is what our priorities are gonna be. And that you can't have one unit halfway through and say, no, we wanna go on a different route, like, you know, the respect for your other units, you have to, you have to go that way, I feel anyway. You know, I know we'll be at the meeting tomorrow, I'm sorry, I have to send my regrets, I'll be giving them now, but that's my opinion on it, you know? To make it work, it has to be fair, you know?
And I, I think the original purpose of those joint council meetings was for communication only. But it's evolved through the years into something more than maybe what everyone expected. So it might be something that you do want to have a conversation about, is the process and is the, the way that this regional group works together, um, to see if anyone's interested in making the next step forward or just keeping it on an information basis and not make motions, um, maybe something you could add tomorrow. And process driven.
It's a great point, I tell you that.
I guess I, I missed all those meetings, but, so there was actual motions being made?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. It was recommendation.
Okay, a recommendation, not a motion, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we made a motion, certainly, though.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it was a, it was a mo, it was definitely dealt with as a motion, but it, but it had no power.
No.
Right? It basically took, they, that, that decision went to each individual council.
It had to go to each individual council, however, most of the council was there, so if you agree there, there was a
You figure it's a.
Probably ninety-nine point nine percent chance that it was gonna get passed that, because you were, you know, the majority of the council were there.
You know, I, I guess, is it an official body or is it an unofficial body?
Unofficial.
It's an official, it's an official, it's an official.
So, so, you know, if it's unofficial, I guess it should only be a discussion and then, you know, bring it back to your council, not with motions and recommendations and.
That's right.
You know?
It's a great point, yeah.
Because if it's, you know, it's not sanctioned and that, it's unofficial, we're just basically meeting and talking, right? You know, there's no governing body there, is there?
No, and we, we did, we discussed as a group what we feel, even, you know, you, you, you might bring something up and they agree or they don't. But like you said, it doesn't have to be into a motion.
I think naturally because we are councillors, we're used to making motions and recommendations and all that. But it's just something to, uh, maybe talk about and, you know.
Yep.
We do have lots of good examples, like the Waste Park and Waste Check and Yarmouth, as I mentioned.
For sure.
Where bodies are in place and funding's in place, so maybe in the future, if you're gonna have a major expansion on the Mariners Centre, you set something up that's got some funding and, and vote and power and.
Yeah.
Alright, okay.
Okay, anything else on this?
The only thing I've gotta add on is probably to Calvin and Richard was that, you know, like Alan, and Alan said also, it kinda feels good now you're sitting there with everybody, you kind of have that relationship, it kinda feels good, you know? That's it.
Alan, did you have something else?
Uh, one other thing through my experience through AMA, uh, that I would like to share. Um, the province has, uh, the, the, the minister, the new minister of Department of Municipal Affairs, on the minister's mandate is, uh, something called municipal modernization. So on, that is a priority of the province of Nova Scotia's Department of Municipal Affairs, approved through the budgetary and, and other processes. Which means that the province is actively looking at how governments need to operate now and into the future. So, um, some of the challenges that have been presented to the UNSM and the AMA are as follows, that people, like, and, and it's, and it's said in, in, uh, in the, uh, it's also said in, um, uh, oh, in the Now or Never Report, that there's a lot of, there's a lot of like infighting and boundary and territory protection in Nova Scotia. And that is getting in the way of certain things happening in terms of like growth or increased sales or exports, or whatever the case may be. Um, municipal government is, is considered no different in that area, there's a lot, there's been a lot of, of infighting and people, you know, defending each other's boundaries. Now, that doesn't mean, so the province, the province had a couple of tools in place, like one is amalgamation, one is, is dissolution. But that's, that's not the tool for everyone. And, you know, this council's gone on record to say that they're, they're not thinking at all about amalgamation. And, uh, and so what the province is saying is even when you had active councils looking to amalgamate, like Pikto County, the thing can go sour pretty fast. And so the tool, and so what the province is saying is the tools at which that provided other municipal units to try to better their situation is actually making relationships worse.
Yes.
Than they have been in the past, and it's, it's causing other problems. So what they're saying is, well, we still want municipalities to work together, we still want them to plan regionally, we still want them to do all that stuff. But we don't necessarily believe anymore that amalgamation is the solution for everyone. So what they're looking at is a customized approach, but I can assure you, if they want municipalities to work collaboratively, they'll make the money follow. Right? I can assure you of that. If they want something to change, they might change the way the money goes in order to make it change. So your concept of, of, like, right now, we're talking regionally, but there's no regional body, right? So what would happen if the province felt like that was potentially a way to go? So I guess the, the point I'm making is the province is looking at other ways to modernize government and to regionalize government. And so we should be thinking about that because, you know, the money might, and how the money flows from the province could potentially change to match that new mentality. So I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen, I'm saying municipal modernization is a very important priority of the province. And they're look, actively looking at ways to change how things are done. So it's something that you should think about as a council.
Mr. Chair, so would the, would the REN, REN be considered your regional body? I would think.
Yes, it would.
It would, yeah.
It would. I think, uh, and RENs have, have had great success in some areas and, and dismal failures in others. And, and, and I think the point is, is that any solution can't be central. It can't be one solution fits everyone. That's what we've tried over and over again, it's, it's like beating ourselves over the head with it. Um, you know, what's, what's good for Pikto County may not be good for Yarmouth County. So, so, so the local leadership needs to be part of the solution and the solution needs to be customized, that we know. But we just don't know what it looks like yet. Yeah. Anyway, sorry for the long-winded.
No, that's fine. So we're okay with this for tomorrow then. So we'll move on. Request for relief of taxes and interest. And there's an attachment.
I saw move that we relieved a hundred and fifty-two dollars from this file.
Second.
Moved and seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contemplated, carried. Okay. Correspondence and for information. Three-year cost share agreement for subdivision streets, priority list, letter of response from Colin Fraser, the Doppler radar system. Housing, I will bring what I have here on that. And then the small projects, so the three-year cost shared agreement. Any, anybody want anything on that one?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this for municipally owned roads?
I would say yes.
These are for J-class roads. So there are.
The J-class, which doesn't mean we own them, no?
It's, it's, it's considered subdivision roads.
Okay.
So it's, it's all J-class roads. So what would happen is if, if, if on the list of roads, on the J-class road attached, if you see a road that is requiring repairs, which, let's face it, they probably all are at some point, uh, we could apply for fifty percent funding, uh, to the province, and they may or may not do that. That's the concept. So we've never done it since I've been here, but, but that doesn't mean.
So J-class, J-class is, J-class is not owned by TIR, is that correct? I thought they were.
It's owned by TIR, but it's maintained by us.
Okay.
So they're, they're actually, we're responsible for the maintenance.
Yes.
But they do the maintenance.
Right. And then, yes.
Yeah.
I see though there's other classes as well, I believe, like, I and G.
Yes.
Or do they all fall under the same?
Um.
H.
Just rotating the, uh, document. So they all have different classifications and definitions, I don't have that immediately in front of me. Um, and they're treated differently. So J are the ones that we pay for, uh, for the maintenance. In some cases, some of these are maintained that we do not pay for. Um, but I will get, I'll get a, to answer that question, I will, I'll get more detail for you at a future time.
Just wondering this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, to, to the best of my knowledge, that's a list that was sent to us by TIR of the roads that fit in this program.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, they're listed here.
The difference between the classes of roads are difficult, uh, information to attain. But those are the roads that would be included in the program.
So it's pretty raw and westbound, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
I'm surprised by some of these that fall, that fall in, in, in that category.
So all of the J-class roads on this list should be, um, maintained, like, they should be plowed by the province of Nova Scotia. So if, if you see one on the list there, that's a J in your community and you don't believe it's being plowed, that's a problem.
Yeah.
Cause we're paying for it to be plowed. Yeah.
Oh, okay. We're already paying for some. We're paying, we're paying, the tr, our transportation that you see on our budget covers what you were talking about.
Yeah, it's about forty-eight grand.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. And it's nowhere near the actual cost of maintaining those roads.
No, for sure.
It's, it's like a third.
Yes. Okay. The letter of response on the Doppler.
I have a comment on that. According to the letter and reading it, it's kind of politely saying that, uh, well, we went on our, on our, for our meeting tomorrow, maybe it should be right off of there, but, uh, off of the list, but, uh, it's kind of politely saying that they're, from now to two thousand twenty-three, they'll be doing some changes in some of their radars. Let's say Halifax, Fredericton, it will, could go from the, what they are now, the kilometers they are now, to maybe two hundred and fifty kilometers. So we, we could and could not maybe get more, more coverage possibly, but they're not sure yet.
That.
Well, I kinda got out of it.
Yeah.
There used to be one, one in Yarmouth years ago.
What's that?
If, if you put, if you, uh, every aircraft in the world has one that knows what they're playing, so they're not, we're not talking high-tech stuff here. There are thousands and millions of them, but, uh, for, forecasting, if you look at the Chipman, Fredericton, and Halifax one, both of them will make a sweep and just barely catch southern Nova Scotia. So you can't forecast what's coming unless you go on the American ones and there's still a big dead zone in the Gulf of Maine. So if a low pressure's building up or, or whatever, they can't pick up to, to do accurate forecasting for our immediate end of the province. But with this extended range, that should cure the problem. But over the next four to seven years, I believe this is, but.
Uh huh. So that's gonna get disgusting.
Peter Lowbridge brings it up to me every time he sees me, but.
Okay. Housing. There's, there's a survey going on. And it's a, it's a, a needs, housing need survey. They want every municipality that can, well, we, we, we supported this, we, 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 uh, support this with, with the funding as well. And the, the survey, and I think I brought that up before, that it's not just Argyle, it's a tri-counties plus now Kings and, and Annapolis. Some of, uh, some of the municipalities are, are on board. If you remember the, uh, the, uh, co-op housing that we had here, that, that, the, uh, presentation, I don't know, it wasn't a presentation at the council, but I had brought it up. There needs to be a housing need in order to get, they, they won't, they won't just come and build houses if they don't think there's a need. And this is what this is gonna do. I believe they want roughly, like, in our municipality, they want, they want at least three hundred, uh, surveys filled out. Now, we did a survey similar to this through, I think it was Gwen, through Sedene, she was, she, they did a housing need. And they got over three hundred responses in the Argyles. The only thing is, that was only a couple of years ago. And this survey here is not going to accept those, those, uh, uh, those surveys, that, that, the response from those. So where we've been now is, we're basically, we're basically approaching the same people that did this a couple of years ago, haven't seen anything done, and all of a sudden we're there again, trying to, to fill another, another one, which is basically the same with a few, a few minor, uh, changes. That could be a problem for us, we hope that it's not going to be. But, uh, they want every, as many councillor who can push this as much as they can, it's online. I have some paper ones, but they're online. Whether they fill out a paper one or not, it still has to be entered in the system. They, they won't just accept the paper ones. Go ahead.
No, no, I just wanted the copy, you keep going.
So, anyway. They would like us as council to try and, and push this as much as we can. Just, just talk to people. It's, it is online, there's paper copies, they can call here, uh, Charlene knows about it. Uh, they can pick up, I don't think there's any paper copies here. But I can leave some here in case someone called, if they wanted one. Uh, definitely if anybody, if you know anybody that, that wants to fill, fill one out and they don't have, they don't wanna go online, if you give me a call, I'll, I'll go visit people and fill them out. And if we fill out the bunch of paper ones and we don't have time to put them online, we can bring them to, uh, uh, the Women's Centre. The Yarmouth, yeah, I don't even know the address, but I think it's there somewheres. And they will enter them in the system. But it's important, I think very important to the municipality, if we're gonna get any kind of housing done by the co-op, this, this, uh, compass, I think it's very, very important that we have the surveys, that the need is actually there. Yeah.
Yes.
I, I filled my note online. Um, the only thing is, I was thinking about this when I was filling it out, actually. I don't know if I'm not taking away.
Well.
With some of my answers.
I thought the same thing.
By the, by the answers I was given and the questions that were asked. And I was wondering at the time if there was a way we could take and, uh, maybe give, uh, some of those booklets to Peggy, our lady that works with seniors.
Peggy's working hard on this.
Good. And, uh, maybe some other, um, agencies in town that work with people, um, that are having a hard time, cause it was just, some of the answers I was given, you know, are you having a hard time? No. And you foresee a hard time coming up, like, you know, are your windows all good and all this, which they all are? And I don't need no, luckily enough, don't need no major repairs in the next little while, so all of these answers I was given, I was thinking to myself, well, this is not helping this, this cause.
It's not showing that there is a need, in your case.
That there's a need, exactly.
That's right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, you know, we all know how figures go and how numbers go, it all depends who's providing them as to how they want them to come out.
And that was, that was something I brought up at the, at the meeting, when we had the meeting on this, and I said, I said, uh, you know, I mean, if, if a bunch of people that don't need, fill them out, like, do we, do we target people that we feel like there's more of the seniors and whatever? And they said, no, you target everybody. Because is there not a question here somewheres that if you were planning, if you were, right? What doesn't affect you now, doesn't mean it's not gonna affect you in ten, fifteen years. So, so housing needs is not just for who needs them today, it's who's gonna need them in the future. So, so housing needs is not just for who needs them today, it's who's gonna need them in the future as well.
You're right, but what I'm saying here is, there is people out there that it is affecting the day.
Those are the people that we gotta get to fill these out.
I feel as though that we have to get them bored, fill them out.
If you have seniors clubs in your area.
Yes.
You, you go, you go to the seniors club with, with a couple of these, and you just, it shows exactly, you know, like, how to get online and whatever. And, uh, hope that they will fill them out. I know Peggy's going, she went already, and I don't know if it's in Marys Hill or not, she went to a seniors, and I think she's gonna go back at the next meeting they have to fill some of these out with them, as far as I know, so.
That's great.
I mean, we did get about over three hundred last time.
Yeah.
They're there, but it's just that if I had filled one out because I need something, in two years I don't see anything, and someone comes back to my door and say, well, you know, gotta fill another one, I'm not sure that, what's the use, you know? And that's what I'm more afraid of.
And again, exactly, you know, how many times do you study something? You know, hoping that you get a different answer, when you're, you're given the same material.
That's right.
It's, you know?
But we, you know, we got funding and, uh, for the survey, and it's, it's a good project, and, and I'm, I'm kind of encouraged with this compass company. For the, for the co-op housing, they, they seem to be very, very interested in, in doing something. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. Now, small project. That's yours.
Oh, yes.
It's housing, is it?
It involves, it involves a house.
There you go.
Uh, so I just wanted to let you know that, uh, at the next meeting, we'll be bringing a recommendation, uh, that, that will potentially run contrary to our wastewater bylaw in West Pumiko. Uh, there's a situation where, in the original design of the wastewater district, or wastewater, like, the, the pipes, a lateral was placed in an unusual spot. And the lateral just so happens to be on the adjacent property's land. So I don't know how that happened, this is back in nineteen seventy-seven, so we're not gonna find out how that happened, we just know it happened. So, um, and so this particular gentleman is looking to hook up, and under normal circumstances, we would tell them, look, the lateral's right there, it's your responsibility to hook up from the lateral to your home. That's what the bylaw says. And so, if you have to, and so, for instance, if, if you're on the wrong side of the road, that could be a problem. Right? Because you gotta go and hook up across, and sometimes you have cuts, and, anyway, so fortunately, this particular situation is not one that has to go across a road, but it does impact, uh, the sidewalk. Uh, the bylaw is clear about what costs are the residents and what costs are not. And in this case, this would typically be the cost of the resident. But in this particular instance, uh, we believe that it's a fault of ours, that the lateral was not there in the first place. So we will be recommending to you, um, a solution that could, uh, require us to invest money, we don't know how much just yet. So at the next meeting, we'll be bringing that to your attention, it's actually councillor Dinkin that brought it to my attention. And we had an opportunity to look at our designs as built designs, and it's clear that the lateral was put on some random property that wasn't his. So, um, anyway, I don't believe it's gonna be a very expensive situation, the fact of the matter is, is this person would still have to connect to the lateral to his home, that's unchanged, it's, it's, uh, the first piece to put a T in, and into the existing, um, wastewater, uh, lateral, and put the T, put the lateral in. And, uh, what I will be recommending is that that would be a cost that would be absorbed by the municipality, because it's an error and omission on our part.
Is that legal? Would that be legal according to a bylaw?
Uh, it, it would.
I'm not against what you're doing.
No, no, I mean, I, I think that we have to get an interpretation around that, which is why I, I haven't brought it to you for decision. Um, you know, what I'm saying, it's the, it's, from my perspective, it's the right thing to do. So, so if we have to, if we have to, uh, if we have to pass a motion for an exception of some sort based on the circumstances, uh, then that might be how we address it. So, so we know what the right thing to do is, but we just, we may not have the mechanism to do it just yet, so we're, we're looking at that. And if you had any questions or concerns about it before the next meeting, just, just give us a shout. But it's, it, we don't, we'll, we'll get you the pricing as soon as we know. So, I wanted to raise it now, cause it's, it's an ongoing item.
Two more.
I, I, um, just followed up a little bit, I've been working with Alan and Hans on this for a little while there now. They've been great as to what, you know, they can do right now, but, uh, the problem is, I, like Alan was saying, it's no fault of the property's owner at all, where this lateral is ho-, is put, he wants to hook up, but because of where this lateral is put, he cannot hook up. And I honestly don't feel as though, uh, we can charge somebody all the, um, expenses of putting a lateral where he can hook up, when the initial problem was not his, or he had nothing to do with in the first place. So, that's my position on it.
But this is obviously an existing property back in nineteen seventy-six or whatever.
Long time before, a hundred years old this house is, and that or so. And the lateral should have been placed open front of the house, the homeowners at the time did not wanna hook up to the sewer, which was their prerogative.
Their, their, their decision.
You know, but now the homeowners that are there now, it's a young family, we're lucky enough to have them in Pumiko, staying in Pumiko, working in Pumiko, paying taxes to the municipality, I feel as though we have to do what we can, and that on our part, you know?
Okay, so we brought up the next meeting. Financial requests. I don't see any. Agenda topics for next meeting, or notice of motion.
We just had one.
We just had one.
Yeah.
We just had one, really, yeah, you're right.
Sorry.
I put you at the wrong place.
And then, like I say, Alan's working hard on this with me, like, he's jumping ahead of himself and everything, but that's good.
And question period, any questions coming in through the internet? Nobody knows we're on, we're, we're, we're a week ahead.
We've had some, we've had some watchers.
Yes. Oh, on today, me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, jeez, I just put it on, and it's, it's like, it's like listening to you again. Um, no, there's some comments around our conversation around the regional, uh, regional discussion, I think there's some opinions on that, so it's good.
Very, very great.
Just through Facebook.
Just through Facebook and you.
And then municipality varial page, and, yeah. Snap it in.
Okay. Who's gonna join, he's not here.
Who'll join you?